Hey, everyone, welcome. Thank you for coming out on a cold with me night. Appreciate everyone being here. We are missing Grant and Will tonight, but we will miss them. And this meeting, I need to let you all know this meeting is being recorded, audio and video recorded. The first thing on agenda is approval of minutes.
So, so.
Thank you. Anyone have any corrections? Or discussion? Hey, y'all, in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. And approval of claims.
Oh.
Second. Any questions or discussion?
I had a question for Callie. The, we're, we're working on that ventilation system at the elementary. Have you got an invoice for that?
Ah, not that I know of. I can go back and look. I mean, I have kind of been in and out this last month, so things are all on board, but not that I, I think we paid Paul McHannaf on the engineering, but I don't think on the ventilation thing, I haven't received anything.
Okay. Is that a Pico? They just got that done, right?
Or work on it.
Yeah.
It'll be my report.
Okay, thank you.
Were there any other questions? Hey, y'all, in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Communications to the front of the board, I don't think. I have a letter of resignation. We'll come to that later. Um. Public comment on non-agenda items. You guys are on the agenda, so you're up next. Okay, so let's go, go for it.
So just a quick preface here. While back this school year, Mr. Ayers came to me and had shared that there was a, had a presentation on fossils in his grade seven science class. And out of that presentation came quite a bit of excitement, enthusiasm for the idea of fossils. And so from that presentation also came the idea of a field trip of a couple of days of length, and I won't steal their thunder about what that's about. So we talked about this, it's an over, they're asking for permission to go on an overnight trip after school is over at the end of May. And so I told them they'd need to come and present to the board and get permission because it's an overnight trip. And so I won't steal any more of their thunder, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Ayers and these awesome students that have come with them. Okay, so this is Charlie Bogard, Aubrey Vischer, and Hunter Aragon. They are our seventh grade science class. Laura Jones.
Oh, so Ms. Erica, she gave us a presentation on her, like, I want to say her, like, fondness of fossils and everything and how much she loved them. And after that, we all just were, like, really scarred because we really wanted to go. And so we need permission to go to Cabo.
All right, I picture a million years ago, this was out.
So we need permission to go to Cabo, I'm ready for the fossil lake safari, I think it's called, right? And so do you want to put a video real quick?
Sure. I picture a million years ago, this was a huge lake called Fossil Lake. They believe it covered about fifteen hundred square miles. This type of rock and the sandwich layering and the way that, that the fossils have been preserved is extremely unique. The quality of, of the way that they're preserved, it can't be found anywhere else in the world. People should come down here because this is your chance to find amazing fossils.
We are one of the only places where you can potentially dig your fossils from start to finish, be able to cut them and see the preparation on them, and be able to have the, the whole experience.
One of the coolest things about finding a fossil out here is when you split the rock open, you are the first human being to ever see that fossil.
It's primarily fossils of fish. There are over twenty species that have been found in this quarry. You can find plants, very rarely there will be reptiles and crocodiles and turtles found, as well as birds and mammals.
You can come and dig and keep everything you find, up to a hundred thousand dollars in value. That is a very rare opportunity.
It's really amazing just seeing the joy on people's faces when they split open a rock, see that herb and fish just sitting there.
It's one of the few places that you can visit more than once and have a completely unique experience every time.
We focus on trying to bring you the best time possible and trying to teach you how to split, preserve, and maintain your fossil integrity while also having just great family time.
You don't need to know anything about splitting fossils or fossils in general to come down here and dig with us. Just know how to drink water and get here and we will take care of the rest.
You are going to find fossils and we're gonna help you make it a spectacular experience for your whole family.
There is nothing in Montana even remotely like this. You can go north of Ruddyard and watch other people dig is the nearest thing we have.
So I want you guys to just picture this real quick. Imagine being a thirteen, twelve-year-old kid, and you gotta go dig your own fossil, get to keep it, and if it was like an undiscovered species, then you get to have the privilege to be able to be the first person to ever find that.
Think about how clever you have a fossil named after you, like an Aragon fossil, or like something like that. We can watch your fossil.
So what we're proposing, the fossil place doesn't open till May twenty-fourth. We are done with school on May twenty-third. So we're proposing to go the following week, which opens up the bus because no sports. It's a two-night trip. It's a nine-hour drive, drive time. We have planned, I've already got the rooms reserved just in case. We're in contact with the place to see if we can get a student discount. It's basically private pay. We've already talked to the parents, said if this is a possibility, could each student come up with, we're hoping two hundred and fifty bucks a person. I have some basic information of what we're trying to accomplish. We're gonna minimize the cost as much as we can. We're gonna go to fossil monument museum on half of the day and then dig on the other half of the day. And you see, these are right from that same spot, the quality of fossils you can find. Callie and I talked about the use of a school bus. And we would, the school district would allow use of the bus at no cost to the group. And so that we're covered with workman's comp, we would ask the group to pay for the driver. And in past times, what we do, the driver's a parent. And so oftentimes that parent would just donate that money back. But that, in order, like I said, to recover with workman's comp, we, we have to, on paper, cover that, to cover that cost for workman's comp insurance. So we have agreed for that, if you're willing, to let them go.
Have you considered doing any, oh, you said fundraisers and private pay?
Yeah, we put our name in in case a track meet comes up in the spring. If, you know, we're late in the game. But, you know, we have ideas to do a fundraiser between now and May, other than concessions, but concessions, you know, you can make eight thousand dollars, which, you know, split equally is, you know, quite a bit when you're talking, you know, two hundred and fifty bucks a per person. Cost cutting, we've brainstormed. We're gonna take some Yeti coolers and make sandwiches on the trip down. We're staying at a hotel that has free breakfast. So the only meal we would buy is dinner at night, and we're gonna go to like RV something cheap. But, I mean, we brainstormed ways to try to keep the cost as low as possible. So we'd leave on Tuesday after Memorial Weekend, drive on Tuesday, dig Wednesday, drive back Thursday.
I think that sounds super cool.
Yeah, yeah, I do.
I like your presentation.
I think it works great because privately funded.
So really, it's just use of the bus, I think that we have to approve. Well, and where the students drive, like.
Yeah, we generally require an overnight trip be.
Approved.
Approved, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I will say if, if it's approved, that we, we, we tell this to our seniors who take overnight trips that you're going out and representing Longhorn Nation, and we expect you to be respectful and responsible and give the Longhorns a great image. And I'm sure you're all capable of doing that.
Yeah, they've been very enthusiastic about the students that have been, certainly Mr. Ayers has, and so I would highly recommend that your blessing and permission to allow them to travel.
Do you need a motion?
I do need a motion. I didn't obtain a motion, yeah.
I'll make that motion. Did we allow them to go?
Thank you.
Second.
More discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes.
Twenty-seventh through, yeah, twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth, it's a Tuesday through Thursday.
Book reports due on June first?
Yeah.
Well, we've talked about, if we find enough fossils, maybe sell on some over summer celebration to reimburse some of the cost. Depends on how many quality ones we find, but, I mean, that was a brainstorm that they came up with. Because you can keep everything, some of the more expensive, unique ones they keep, because some of them get shipped to the Smithsonian. But on their website, they have some that are for sale for twenty-five thousand dollars. Fish. Wow, so. I was gonna go regardless, you guys. But I, I only have two requests. One is that when you get back at some point, we can schedule a time for you to come back to a board meeting and tell us a little about your trip and show some pictures of the group that went. And the second one, the most important, is have fun.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I told you I'd be a problem.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did you guys eat? Did you eat there? You know what? We have some pizza. Do you want some pizza?
Oh.
You're good? Okay. Okay, you're welcome.
Hi, I'm Kelly Jessup. Thank you, thank you so much, thank you for coming. I have a couple of things for the board chair report. One is, the city is pretty good growth policy. Wants to apply for Montana Main Street affiliation. It's a program through Department of Commerce. And it comes with money and planning resources and things like that to just help develop tourism and downtown development. So it's a process, they only choose one community a year, but as part of that process, we have to have a community meeting to kick it off. And so Mickey Zerker from Montana Main Street Program from the state is coming next Monday to have a community meeting. And so I have these little tickets. If anyone is interested in attending, it'd be great to have some school representatives at that meeting. I'm just gonna, yeah, absolutely.
Where's me?
It is at the Grand Union. Sorry, it's at the Grand Union at six thirty next Monday night. Okay, I can sit around if anyone else is interested in attending that, but. Okay, and then next on the agenda is new board training document. So this came about from, well, I kind of started thinking about it when I was attending Mcel. And MTSBA recognizes in awards certificates to school boards who have gone through a certain number of hours of training on their websites. And as I saw, I watched, I think Geraldine School had all their board members go through all the training videos and they got recognized at the MTSBA conference. And I was like, well, I don't know if I've done a really good job of promoting the training that MTSBA has available on their website. There's a lot. They used to do more regional seminars and things. And they don't do that so much anymore, but they have a ton of resources online, and we pay through our MTSBA membership, a lot of money, and we should be utilizing those. So I really wanted to just, I had thought about putting together some kind of orientation document, and then I realized it's all out there. I just need to tell you where to find it. And so I put together, if you wouldn't mind sending those around. Give a second for it to, to turn to you. Make its way around.
Yeah.
So when you all were elected to the board, you should have received an MTSBA login. If you don't have one, I think our business office can help you out. But you should have a login to MTSBA. So first of all, on this first page, there's a picture of our, our school website. If you haven't been on our school website, that circles, yellow circle on the school board info is where you find our policy manual and the online version of our policy manual. We pay MTSBA to keep that document up to date. So when we review policies and improve them, MTSBA makes sure that our online policies are updated. All the schools that MTSBA manages are on the MTSBA website. So if you ever have a question about other schools' policies, they're all available there. You can go search theirs as well. So I just pointed out here, the first few, the first section of the policy manual, policies eleven hundred to seventeen hundred, cover all the things you need to know as a board member. So if you've never read them, I highly recommend you go on and, and scan those policies. Most of them are pretty short, doesn't take too long, but it covers public meeting laws, conflicts of interest, you know, information like if you missed three board meetings in a row, you, or, you know, forfeit your, your spot, things like that. So it covers all of that. Policy seventeen hundred is our complaint policy. And we, you know, when you get phone calls from somebody complaining about something, it's really helpful to be clear on what that policy is and, and know where to point people. But those in particular are good policies to review. Policies eleven thirty and eleven thirty P cover the different board committees and responsibilities. And I know most of you are all familiar with what those are, but those are pointed out here specifically for new board members to review. Okay, so on the next page, this is covering the MTSBA resources. And I just pointed out a couple of sections. There's a, a section called Orientation for Newly Elected Trustees. If you've never done it, it's probably worthwhile, even if you're not newly elected. And then the second section I would definitely recommend is the School Budget Symposium. You all know that school finance is incredibly complicated, and I think there's some great information in this section. It would give you a good overview. So my recommendation is park out some time once a week to go out and watch a video, put it on the background when you're doing something else. I think it'd be really worthwhile.
It's not, some you have to click through, it'll just play?
Yeah, I think it's like, just like a YouTube video, it just links to it, yeah. So there are other resources on here, Think Tank Thursday sessions, there's like a bunch, like if you really want to learn about the current legislative session and the bills that are going through, there's a lot of information on there about that, too, so. And then finally, you know, we try to encourage you to attend the Mcel Conference. The, the, you know, school pays for you to go attend that conference. There's also online attendance opportunities and things like that. So I just wanted to list that on this document for new board members. But anyway. In a nutshell, read those particular policies and utilize the MTSBA website for training. And if you didn't know those existed, my apologies. Okay. Um. Out of district attendance. That's on, is that a carryover item, or did we have?
Well, we've had some, it is a carryover item, but now the law's kind of changed. But we do have a couple that have joined our district later. And so we, in our policy states, we like to have those back. And I reached out to OPI, and you still have to accept them, even though it's past our policy deadline. You can't, I mean, we can say on the forum, you know, that we, I guess, aren't thrilled that they're here, but you have to, you know, that, you know, that, because you can't plan for them, right? Because the budgeting process has already been done, and you still have to accept them. And I think we're gonna have a bunch more coming in the next year. So that process is starting all over, and actually, the law is actually going to take effect. So you'll have to plan, so you'll take your out-of-district attendance forms that we received this year, and those are the ones that we're gonna get. So it's a year behind essentially. So the ones that we filled out this last, I think, we had, we said we wanted them back by, like, July, I think, so that we could, you know, levy for them. And so now we're gonna start, they're gonna go forward with that, and you're gonna submit those bills to either other districts that students come here, or our students go to other districts. So we just wanted you to be aware that that legislation didn't change and that we're gonna have some, you're gonna see that on some planes. And it did, I mean, it, I guess it's not really necessarily plain. You'll see it on there. It changes, it doesn't change your A and B, it changes your tax, how much you levy, yeah. How much you levy in or out of your community, your district levy. It's kind of a funny thing, but.
Does it come out of a specific fund, a ventilation levy, or does it some?
Your general funding.
Your general funds.
Okay, but you can levy in your tuition fund to make up the difference. So it's kind of a silly thing. And like our district, and depending on what district you're at, you pay based on there, so like, the kids that go, Chester's a good example. We have some children that reside in Little Bay County. Then the tax base is different, so it's actually, you know, the money is different. You know, where like Geraldine or, I, you know, it's the same, really. So I know it's an interesting thing, but it thought it might go away, but it's not going away. So just kind of keep, it's one of those legislative bills to kind of keep top of mind.
So wasn't the A and B count July, you said? No?
A and B is already done. Spring A and B is already done. But they do, it's the only thing in school finance that's in arrears. Everything else, like, I have a hard time sometimes keeping track, because I've already moved on to two thousand twenty-six. And even though it's the only thing that we do in arrears, it seems kind of strange. But I guess, how can you predict where students, like, you know, where we just got some new students that are out of district. And so they'll go on next year, even though we got the form, and they're in our building this year. And they may out graduate next year, but we get paid for them next year. It's a very strange thing.
It just makes it really hard for planning and budgeting.
It does, yeah, it's really. And especially districts that, yeah, children move around a lot.
You don't actually need us to take any action on that, right?
Nope, just one of those kind of for your information.
Where we stand right now, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have far fewer of them going out of our school district than, we have more coming in than going out. We have some going out, but.
We may have a lot going out.
Okay.
And some of that.
This current school year, I guess.
Yeah, this current school year, yeah. But we may have more going out. Just depending on how some of the colonies wanna do that.
Yeah.
Because we have some colonies in our district.
Yeah. But this year, yeah.
But this year, yeah, they didn't file that way. Though it'll be interesting to see if next year they move around and how they file, and then we'll have to pay potentially. I don't know, it's an interesting thing. There's some other school dealing with that, too. So. I don't know, it seems unneighborly to me. I have a hard time with this policy or the legislation, I guess.
Okay, well, we will move on to boxes with our Roxy is under the weather, you know, they will make it so.
Yes, so this is pretty self-explanatory, and I got the quick two-minute version of that. I'll run down on this report, so I'll, I'll try to keep her report the same length as my report of this information. But it was pretty straightforward. They had a pretty successful fifth and sixth grade ski trip, and they actually had quite a bit of snow, I think. Oh, yeah, tons of snow up there. And so that was the good news. The bad news was the fifth grade fishing trip, there was so much snow, they couldn't go fishing, so she was kind of bummed about that. The January twenty-ninth, they had the sheriff visit. Roxy and I talked about, there was a one situation, a couple of situations in particular with, with student safety, where we felt her response was to have the sheriff come and just as a reminder to students about reporting, about, you know, thinking about safety, and should they see something that is unsafe, they need to, talking about reporting. And she felt that was a successful presentation by the sheriff's department, and we were grateful for their help. The third graders went to Casa del Gringo. That was a little bit of a field trip for them. And conference leaders went home on Monday, February seventeenth. She talked about the your, oh, come on, yep, your
Oh.
Individual, individualized, yeah, and plan. And there, there's gonna be the first week in March, and she talked about the fact that they've completed their winter benchmark. Remember that in the works, we, at a previous board meeting, we moved, actually, the parent conferences were originally scheduled for last week. And we, the board approved to move them to middle of March from the middle of February. So that's upcoming for us all across the district, the week of the tenth through the fourteenth of March. A spelling bee on March fourth and pre-screening on March third. And I believe she sent out her smore with this information to you so electronically. So that's, I have to report for the elementary school.
Do you have any idea how we're gonna do benchmarks? With no Department of Education?
It's an excellent question. I don't have an answer for it.
I'm just curious.
What, what I've understood is the expectation would be that that's left up to the states to decide, but that's what little, you know, meetings I've attended, but yeah, that's, that's how I'll answer that question for now. Stay tuned.
It's the wild west out there.
Are there any other questions? I know Roxy said she was available to answer questions if you need, but. All right. Hello.
Good evening. My name probably longer than rocks, it's just time. On purpose. But on her behalf, everything is going really well at the elementary, and, and she wants to reiterate that, that the, I think, one of the biggest problems or struggles that we're having in both schools is finding subs. And so if anybody knows anybody that wants to sub or can apply for that position, it, it's really needed. It's no different than Paul over there, or myself, or anybody trying to find help. And that's been a real struggle. If you look at the big board, every day, there's somebody that's covering for somebody, and it's been a struggle for a school. So if you know somebody that can sub, or would like a grandparent that wants to come in and sub, apply for it. I know that that's really needed, and, and it would help her out greatly. Thanks to Larry, he's back. If you were watching the hall this evening, Aiden has moved south with his family. And that'll be coming up a little bit, but Larry is reading into sub as he always does. And he seems to be a little bit happier when he is back in the saddle, I guess. He, he kind of misses it. We are trying to get some extra help on different things. We Um, we have the eighth graders coming in, like we did last year, we started them tonight. Um, just doing the garbage, and that takes about forty-five minutes to have those kids, and they're excited to help out, as, as Richard saw today. Um, they all volunteered, they all have their hands up, so we picked out three, and then we'll pick three next week. And, um, Larry showed them the ropes, and they're excited to do that. Um, Danny at the elementary is keeping the building really, really clean, she's, she's really a professional cleaner. Um, and we are giving the kudos to her for really, really, um, taking over, and, and, uh, I'm just a moment's notice, she just started, and, and, uh, we're doing really well there. As Cory has moved on to the para, um, sector, and so they're all doing really well. Um, a few more, thank you, the city crew, if you look outside here, if you parked out there, they're out here every morning, that I'm out, they're out. And they're keeping that front end clean for the bus zones at both schools. And I know that that helps out our bus drivers, Paul, and those guys to keep that zone cleaned out as best as possible. Um, I had some people that were on call for me, uh, recently, um, Cody and Craig Lass and Bob T. Um, Bob got called a couple times, um, but Craig came over, I think, once out of the couple days, and, and Bob was here a couple times, just on the phone stuff. Um, Pat and Roxy of both schools and our office staff for, um, having the list of people and being ready to go, and I know Pat made a few phone calls to get a couple, um, subs in to help out when we needed it. Um, Kale was here a couple times, and, um, he was kind of the top of the list to help out, and, and he came over and responded a couple times to help the situation. And, um, so he knows about what's going on, and pretty much can get talks through whatever, um, whatever electrical and stuff. We had a couple things, and, and he checked that out. Kelly was here doing a little snow removal for me on that first couple days, and so thanks to them. Um, and just to let you know, I waited a half hour getting back to the room after surgery to ask about the school, so I, I, I gave it a half hour. But in reality, I asked the nurse downstairs, um, when I first woke up, what was going on at the school, and she didn't have a clue what was going on, so. So onward number, uh, we had an inspection from our insurance, um, MSIG, right? And we have a lengthy report that we'll be working through, and most of it has to do with long-term. And so we'll get a committee together on that and do long-range planning. Um, and I'll, I'll, I'll highlight a couple things, like the parking lot, I mean, you know, we already know that that's going to be forty-five, fifty thousand dollars, and I mean, that's not just something, but it's on long-term, long-range, what are, what are your plans? Um, and there's quite a few things on there that she noticed that would be in that, uh, long range, that we're going to have to kind of plan for. Another one that we kind of, uh, and I'll just throw this out there, that's on there, um, and the fire marshal has mentioned it, and she mentioned it, and um, is eventually in the back room moving that whole thing around, and rearranging that so that we have like maybe only two stoves in there, and we're going to have to have a fire suppression hood. And that's going to be within that couple years, so the budget's going to have to, we're going to have to look at that and a long-term uh, solution is going to be, I'm sure it's going to be fifty, sixty thousand. And that's from the fire marshal, fire suppression, whatever, so that's going to be long-term, though. They're, they're all in agreement that as long as you have a long-term plan, and that's on there, they're, they're going to go with that. Hartford Boiler Insurance was here, um, Kale took that call, and met with Steve, and that was the day after on the fifteenth. And then he called, and I spent a half hour trying to talk, which was really difficult, for about a half hour, trying to explain things. Um, Kale was walking him through everything, um, the best that he could. And, um, he looked everything over, and he was going to do some talking to our state inspector as to, um, getting everything kind of completed on that. Labor and Industry was here last week, I've just, this has been inundated with people. Um, we got the report back today, a lot of little minor things on there, um, nothing that can be handled. Um, a couple certificates needed, a couple meeting, um, reports, and some outlets that are correct, and a few things like that. Did you look that over? You didn't get it? Okay, well, they send pictures, and you go back through like, uh, my solution out here was out of date, and I already replaced that, and there's an outlet that I've already changed. And I mean, there's certain little things like that, it depends, he has to pick five things that he schooled. And, uh, one, one really funny one, to the portal, and Darren's a shop guy, he'll understand this one. So we're out in the shop, and up there, there's a light socket, and it doesn't have a light on it, but it used to have a hood on it that you would hook on to your car, you know, it's old fashioned, you pull it down. Well, he didn't report that, but one of the kids a long time ago had taken an air mask and just hung it up there, and it's sitting up there, and I, and I explained to him, I said, the kid was just playing around, he hung it up there. Well, he wrote that up, that that mask should have been sealed up in a, in a sealed thing, and this and that. Oh, please, and I tried to explain to him, he's, well, the kid was just goofing around. Oh, no, he wrote me up on that, and I, and I just, so there's a lot of stuff like that on there. So, um, anyhow, we'll get it corrected. Um, one of the main things that we need to talk about tonight is the levy, and I do think that the voters, as Bethany can write this up, um, it was a big support, uh, almost two to one, across the board, uh, for the major upgrade in our school. And, um, and I thank Bethany for, for just really, really great article that she wrote up, and the time to come in the crawl space, if she, she said, I'm not going to go in, I'm in, okay. And, and, and the pictures, I mean, that, that article was, was really rewarding to the, I think, the people that got to see it, that, that, you know, we had pictures of what was wrong, and it really helped explain what the problems were. So thank you to Bethany and the rural press. Um, again, a great vote there. Gary, Morris, and Alan, matters, um, on the electrical side, with Falls Mechanical, we'll be here on Thursday. We, we had a plan last week, and it kind of got mixed up on Friday. Um, this week with the weather, they didn't want to travel, so they'll be here Thursday. And we will be working with Cali on implementing, um, going to bid and, and getting the final project, uh, synopsis down. He's got the plans, I've looked at both electrical and, uh, all of the stuff down at the elementary, and everything looks exactly how we have talked about it. So it's now up to, um, them to decide how we're going to go to bid. He has a couple, uh, suitors that he's already talked to, companies that, that, um, are, are interested very much, so when it does go to bid, and there are several electrical contractors that have talked to Alan, um, that also would like to bid this project. So we're ahead of the game, and that's, that was the whole idea of this. Um, and we'll start that process hopefully next weekend, we'll get with Cal and, and they have worked together before, so it will be a pretty easy process to get that into the paper and, and get all the parameters on that. So the levy will, um, definitely, uh, go through as far as the projects, and, um, we'll start going on that. And hopefully within, you know, a month that we're, we're looking at our people that are going to, you know, we'll get the meetings together and have committee meetings and go through it. Um, so, Michael, um, is also going to look at the unit heaters up here and work with us on that. And that was part of the major project, and we'll be looking back at that. I did contact them last week, and they still haven't heard anything from Verfa, but they're still hopeful that progress is going forward. Um, at Christmas time, when I reported that they had redone it for the third time as far as Verfa, um, Cameron said that they haven't heard anything back, and so that's good news, they haven't resubmitted or done anything like that. So we're still hoping that some of the money would come back in that form. Um, at the elementary, the air system, um, is being worked on. They had Brennan, and Brennan Heating was in, and they did the tin work, and, um, they were waiting for a heating quill, it just came in, they got it hung up there a week and a half ago. And Michael now will come in and put the glyco feed to that, and, um, wiring from Liberty and the controls, and we should be set. And they hope to do that this next week, so, um, that would be the completion of that project. And if you go downstairs, you go into that side room, it's all hanging up there, and the tin work is all done, it's a matter now of, um, getting that glyco feed hooked up in the warm air. So that project is still in progress and monitoring that one. Um, if you've been at both schools, um, you won't hear very many complaining anymore about the heat in the rooms. Um, we're doing really good about that this year, it's been a long, long time, and, and my kids were involved in that, um, several years ago about helping out, and, um, it's, it's amazing that we are that close to just having this thing all set up. The pin tube down in the hallway by the cafe, um, is one of the last things that they need to do, we're probably eighty-five percent on the high school as far as the heating that they had on contract for that. Um, and they will again be back there this next week, they kind of begged off just because of the, the weather and driving out. Um, but we have had heat at both schools, and that's really a good, I, uh, just really good thing. Um, so I don't know if there's, you know, there's a few glitches here and there on thermostats, but really, uh, my heart isn't like we had before, where we had strainers or something like that. We do have the new strainers in, and I think if that's, um, has solved some of the problem with some of the bad stuff that was going through there. A note on, uh, prom coming up is on March 8th, and it'll be, the grand march will be here, and then over at the Egg Museum, Longhorn Day, already, and the citizen luncheon is May 1st, but Longhorn's going down, because those are coming up and being planned, as our committees in the school are doing that. Um, this weekend, we have little guy wrestling here, if you want to come and listen to a lot of activity going on in the gym on Saturday, you're sure welcome to help out, Kale's in charge of that one. And we're, still we're doing snow removal outside, and looking forward to spring and working on the tracks. Nothing else. Question, Karen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, well, I'm getting confused with, we've had a lot of Falls Mechanical and a lot of Michael stuff, I'm getting confused with what they've done and what the, the checks have been for. So sometime when we have a building brown meeting, maybe we can just do a review, would that be okay?
I can explain it right now.
Okay, well, there's.
The, the Falls Mechanical is the main project that we're working on for the, um, the levy.
Well, I mean, in terms of like the stuff we're doing for the ventilation of the elementary.
That, that's, that's been done.
Okay.
That was done, that was done quite a while ago.
The, the building on it?
Uh-huh, okay.
Okay.
So this stuff, this would be the updates on the levy part of it.
Okay.
They, they, I mean, they, that was a kind of a continuation, because we had to have new plans, and, and the electrical plan, he, he gave us a rough graph of it, and now we have the final plan as far as getting into the building. They came down and, and him and a couple of the guys at Falls came down, and they actually took the channels apart in the boiler room and looked at all the wiring, so now we have a complete, uh, kind of a diagram of where everything goes, and where it's going to go into the new system, and where it is, and the voltage, and everything like that. So on that plan, and, and the original plan, we didn't have that, it was just a general. This one is the actual bid plan, that's, that the contractor will look at, and that's the plan that they roll up.
Yeah.
And, uh, Northwest Energy's been contacted, and their engineer will be out next week, and they will put their personnel in plan with whoever gets to bid.
Okay, I just want to make sure we stay on budget, because some of this stuff, it's expensive.
Right.
I'm seeing a lot of forty to sixty thousand dollars come through, so I think it's important that we just keep an eye on that. But we talked about that here in the building, okay?
Um, speaking of, are we okay scheduling that when we do our scheduling later on, or do you want to talk about that right now?
You can do it right now.
Okay, um, Brad isn't here, so I told Brad we could come up with a couple of potential dates, and then run it by him before we finalize it, if that's okay. You liking a specific day in the week, or?
Thursday.
Yeah.
It, Thursday's the best.
Tuesdays are the best.
Tuesdays are the best. And, and not at seven o'clock.
Not at seven?
Yeah.
So you can go to sleep in the mess.
Earlier?
Four o'clock is better, because I think he can get in, and he can get the kids, and he can sit through it for an hour, and I think Brad can be here, I think, and it helps the gal over there out, so she doesn't have to wait here until midnight to get home. True, so I think four o'clock.
Okay.
Works for me.
I don't, and works for everybody. I'm looking at Callie over there, because then she has to wait for sure four hours, and, and, and I'm going to be wanting to go to bed.
What day?
Grant, yeah.
And then once off, if Stephanie gets off, and he gets here and picks the kids up, and it's, it's going to work out for him.
Next Tuesday is the twenty-fifth, and that, the, I don't see any school events that day.
Perfect, mark it down.
Yeah, that, that is a good idea.
Let's go with it.
Okay, so.
You have a right time?
February twenty-fifth, four o'clock. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm in the room.
You got stuff going on?
Is that okay?
It's okay, we'll figure it out. We want to throw out the following Tuesday as an option too, just in case, or?
No, there's no options.
Okay. Okay, so we just need to run that by Brad, make sure he's available, and.
Oh, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, okay?
That means a round check. Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Hey, how are you? Welcome to another cold day.
I think spring season is going to be full of weather like always, and the end of the winter season had some weather, but we, we've made it through. So I'll give you a quick rundown first of, um, probably not everybody, I seem to forget somebody every time, but I'll do my best. Um, speech trauma and debate, or in our case, speech, this year we had speech kiddos, uh, finished their season and represented us very well. Hannah was the divisional champion, and second place in state in memorized public address, and Kalen was our divisional champion. And third place in state in informative speaking. The girls earned themselves a third-place Class C speech divisional trophy, and, uh, we're very proud of, of the way that they finished this season. Um, the robotics team competed, they, they faced a few obstacles, he said, but they were in to go to Bozeman and compete in the state tournament. The high school robotics team, the middle school robotics team did not qualify. And so we were able to take advantage of that, as we were, we are still short on bus drivers at times. And so, uh, we ripped use the vehicle, the car for that situation. Pet Band and Cheer have been doing a great job supporting our events. I so appreciate all the time and effort that they all put in and what they leave for us there. Um, and we're excited to have them back, and part of, part of all we do. We had a unique opportunity, I want to recognize, um, Michael O'Hara, if you were here at the, um, Chester home game. She sang the national anthem for us with the Chester student, we were able to kind of have a, a co, co-team bonding moment there, um, and it was a pretty neat experience. FFA, I forgot to write all of Brooks, but they've done a great job, they went to their districts, and they've been representing us well, and I'm, I want to apologize that I forgot to write down all of their places, but I want to recognize Brooke and, and her team and all that they're putting in. Um, middle school wrestling started last Monday, they'll have diverse competition this Saturday in Shoto. Elementary basketball begins this coming Monday. Um, spring sports will begin before we meet again on March tenth. We just wrapped up state wrestling, uh, at divisionals, we, we were very well represented from all our wrestlers at divisionals. We had quite a list of placers, Brinley was eighth, Taren was sixth, Maya Cooper, Wyatt Lane, and Zoe placed fifth. May placed fourth, Mel and Dylan placed third, Etta placed second, and JoJo was our divisional champion. And coming out of that divisional tournament, the girls won the Class C Divisional Championship Trophy. And then on to state, um, even though you place in divisionals, it doesn't mean that you travel on to state. There's a, a formula from each weight class of who and how they move on. So we were able to take three boys and five girls on to the state tournament. Um, Wyatt Cooper, Lane, Taren, Mel, Etta, Dylan, and JoJo represented Fort Benton in Billings, with Lane taking fifth place in his weight class, and Etta sixth place in hers. And the girls once again, um, brought home a trophy with the Class C third-place state wrestling, girls wrestling trophy. Basketball is moving on postseason this week. The boys finished their season eight and four, twelve and five overall. They are the third seed going into the tournament, they will play at seven o'clock versus Big Sandy up in Haber. The girls finished their season at ten and two, thirteen and four overall. They are the first place seed. They were near the conference championship trophy. They will have a bye in the tournament for the first round and they will play at four o'clock on Friday versus the winner of Hayes and Turner. So our Longhorns have represented us very well and we have lots to be proud of. In all the effort that our kiddos are putting forth and all of the effort that the coaches put behind them. Um, so I appreciate all of all of them. And I'm very proud of all of them. Um. I thought I'd go real quickly over the MHSA rulings that you had me vote on last time, just so you know what is coming up. These go into effect next year. Um, so the students below um, ninth grade was that. They could participate in. Before, for example, if you were in a district where they ran junior high basketball at the same time as volleyball. You could have your students participating in junior high basketball and high school volleyball. You couldn't have them doing it at the same time, but. Because they're different sports, but you were not allowed to do it. In the same sport, so we couldn't have our middle schoolers participate on middle school and high school. Um, and that came, that came, if you remember, from schools that are smaller than us that. If you move your eighth graders up, you know, from a junior high team, you leave them down, you don't have a high school team. It did pass, so now you can use them in. Same sports at the same time. So for example, how that could have affected us this year if we had chosen to and it is, it's kind of our control, your control is. We could have overlapped the eighth grade participation in basketball. We couldn't before, so they couldn't start playing games because they did, they can't start their practices until they finish their. Junior high season, and so they were always behind on practices. Um. Moving forward, if our seasons overlap like that and you so choose, we could choose to work, have the coaches work together. And if they go to high school practices before, then we'll be allowed to start the season at the same time, game wise as the others. Um. I don't think we need to discuss it now. I don't know what our junior high seasons will look like timing wise. That's kind of being re. Done is what I'm told in the one D with how they run some of their timing of their seasons, so I wouldn't even be able to give you. What we need, so just know in the future that we have a little more room to play with it. Um, the transfer rule one, you asked me some questions and I was. Very glad that we were given the opportunity to speak to MHSA before we voted on this. Um, and so the. It failed, but ultimately I'm, I feel okay with it after listening to MHSA speak on the issue. So what happened or what what it was, was if. So say, for example, I I'll use myself as a pretend example. Say I was to. Quit here and move to Great Falls. I got a job in Great Falls and I took and I moved to Great Falls, even if I'm I and I. Lived there and I took Bridger with me. Um, this would have said, even though I moved. She would have to follow the transfer rule and she would not be allowed to play because it was within a fifty mile radius. Um, whereas right now it'd be allowed when I when I actually moved there, it's allowed. This would have changed that. And what it's trying to do is eliminate some of the. Manipulation of the system, which is a good idea, but when MHSA spoke to us and we were directly, we directly asked them some questions. And we said, would you give, we gave that kind of example, you know, I got a new teaching job, I moved. Would you give um. Exceptions and would you allow that? And he said, absolutely not. If you pass this. That means you want this rule and there will be no exceptions allowed. And so it did fail because of that, because we felt. There is legitimate movement happening that it would affect, so that one failed. Um, the award rule where they're bumping up the amount that can be gifted from one hundred to five hundred past. Um, which the rest of them is is how we voted. The NIL rule passed and like we talked about, that was mostly for safety of. It depends on the legislation, legislation, excuse me, but. Um, we have a basis to start from. And then um. The penalties passed, so it is now statewide. If I have to. If an official asks me to remove someone from a game or or we had to move, remove someone from a game, the consequences will be. Three games of that similar. Of that same, what you were removed from. So say I, I keep you out of a varsity girls' basketball game. You miss the next three varsity girls and everything in between. It does also include, to the best extent of our ability, other places. So you couldn't go to. Chester, you couldn't go to Highwood, you couldn't go wherever the next games were. Um, and so you miss everything in between as well. Um, that did pass. We have. We have a yellow card and I've always had this. Our district has always had this yellow card that kind of has the rules on it. But statewide, they now have, are asking everyone to kind of have them. And we've talked to the officials who are kind of supposed to be working, say, hey, that that guy's being a little, is is getting close. So would you go talk to him? So that hopefully we have some kind of a little bit of warning system before we get to that point. And then if you are um, asked to leave a second time, it is a year long suspension from all activities everywhere. So it's, it's now statewide. So just so you know that that's out there. Luckily, we haven't had to deal with that in one. Yeah, don't be. Um, and then the final one.
I noticed that she was looking at Kyla.
Yeah, totally, totally.
Yeah.
Um, the final one that passed is the physical examinations every two years. And the reasoning behind this is in in the bigger places. They feel like, oh, here's sports coming. All these kids are going to all this clinic all at one time. Bombarding the clinic, you know, bombarding the appointments. Um, it's not their actual provider. They're hoping to encourage. There was a lot of debate on this. Um. Encourage people to see their providers instead of just a. A walk in somewhere. Um. And it did pass that it's a two-year thing. But it mostly passed after the discussion for most of the schools that it is under school control. And a lot of the schools are not going to choose. To change it. They're gonna choose to have a physical every year to cover themselves. You know, I'll I'll give um, myself as an example. Um. This was, example was given by a couple of other schools, you know, my daughter's own situation. Was found within a sports physical and if we would have skipped. It, you know, I don't know where we'd be right now, but um. And so a lot of schools, because you still have local control, it did pass as that option. They will still have to have one no matter what coming in in ninth, even if, so you're, you can't use two years from eighth grade, so you can't have one eighth grade and then skip to your tenth grade. No matter what, you have to have it at night. So we can talk in the future. Um, I just wanted to inform you that it's out there. Um, that. That's an option we can look at if you want to change what we need every year. Um. And I think that is all I have on the MHSA things. Is there any questions on those? Alright, so. A few things that I would like to recommend for higher. Um, we have our middle school wrestling coaches in place, but um. In looking at possibilities of of needing some backup or just some support, I have talked to Tyler Starman. And I would like to recommend him as a middle school wrestling volunteer to support our program. Which he has done in the past.
So, second.
Any comments? Is any of y'all the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Host. Motion passes. Um, elementary basketball starts on Monday and we have been advertising that as we lost our coaches to some situations. Um, that they need to take care of personally. Um. Casey Cutoff expressed interest in supporting the girls' fifth and sixth grade basketball program. And so I would like to recommend, do you want me to do girls and boys separate? Sorry, separate, okay. Casey Cutoff. Uh, would like to um, support the girls' program and so I would like to recommend. Casey Cutoff as the second position in the girls' five-six or what we call elementary basketball program.
Who's the first again?
Kim, his wife.
Okay.
So, second.
Any discussion?
This is just for only. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The host. Motion passes. And then with the boys' program, uh. We lost one and then the other and so in talking to the. Junior high coaches, they have. Agreed to come down if if you are so willing and support us in the elementary. Basketball position, so I would like to recommend Megan Lords and Callie O'Hara. To lead the boys' fifth and sixth grade program, which will help make a great transition into the eighth grade program.
Thank you, ladies.
So, second.
Any discussion?
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy to be healthy enough to do it. The host. Okay. Uh, talking middle school track, which will be coming up a little bit later, but looking forward, um. I would like to recommend Damon Gilbra. He has been a coach for the past couple of years and he's excited. He likes track. He. Likes the kids. The kids know him from school. Does a good job. Um, he would like to return. But in. In the past, we've had a couple of others depending on numbers and we will need to look at numbers again. At that, but our second one, um, she has. Decided that she needs to step away personally this year. So right now I only have Damon as the coach to recommend for you. For the paid position. Do you want me to volunteer separate? Is that separate? Okay. So I recommend Damon Gilbra to continue as a middle school tracker, which.
So.
District one again. This goes through eighth grade.
It goes through eighth grade, so it's okay.
We both.
Okay.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The host. Motion passes. So I will post and look for the others, but um. Ray Allen has come forward and said he would be willing to support the program. And be a volunteer with the middle school track program and help out. When and as needed, so I would like to recommend Ray Allen as a middle school track volunteer.
So. Second.
Thank you. Comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The host. I feel like I'm forgetting something, but I believe that's all I have unless you have any questions for me. Probably remember it, you know, when we adjourned and walked out the door, but thank you, everybody.
Thank you. A lot going on. So much fun.
Okay, um, we are down to your report, huh?
Okay. Uh, I would also like to comment and thank publicly thank the community for their support of the levy. Um, this is my first levy election. Didn't know quite what to expect and. Um, certainly learned some things, some things we could do differently uh, next time. I thought that our um, going out to women's club, Lions Club, David Coffee. Some of those kinds of things. And again, I would echo that that Bethany's coverage in the paper was great. Also, we were on KR TV after we, our levy passed. So that was kind of fun uh, afterwards and I thought it was a good depiction of our school district, so hats off to us. It just is another reminder. Magnify the fact that our community is incredibly supportive of our schools. And the the expression I used in the KR TV report is that the schools are a real pride point for this community. And that to me, the passing of the levy is just another example of how they feel about it, so that's that's pretty cool. Um. The, in my report, you'll see tomorrow, again, I put the link for the emergency handbook. If you want to review that, we'll be voting on that. I think tonight's the second time. We look at the emergency handbook. Did we pass it already? Maybe you already passed it. Did we already look at that, Prince? Maybe we did. Anyway, um. Uh, the one, one thing kind of new I wanted to share with you is that last spring, we were part of our accreditation process. We put together a group called the Community Engagement Task Force. And unfortunately, through a lot of. Trials and tribulations and people are just really busy. We really only ever met once, but we had a really, really good meeting and out of that meeting, one of the things that we needed to, this was the meeting where. I was sending an email to the wrong person, but anyway, that's a funny story. Anyhow, um, out of that uh, came, we we, as a school district with our um. Accreditation report, have to create what we call a graduate profile. And so we took the information and Rox and I felt like, again, we're very busy, people are busy, so we took the things that we gathered together last spring and both uh, Kyla and. And Kale were on that that group, plus some parents and staff members. And so we actually came up with, um, so I'm gonna hand this out. I'll give you a copy. Bethany, so you can take a look at it. The graphic of it, it's not something that the group has seen, actually, but. Yeah, so I'm gonna show you now. But the, you'll see that you open up the first page, the graduate profile, they gave you some examples. And the way, the way I look at this is that. Graduate profile is like you're going to buy, think ima- imagine you're going to buy a car. And you you, they ask you, what kind of features do you want in the car? Well, I want to have air conditioning, I want to have a fancy stereo, I want to have, you know, leather seats, et cetera. You're telling, you're telling the the car salesman. The the features you want in that car, that's the the best car we could produce. Well, it's the same thing with a graduate profile. You're thinking about what kind of qualities do our students, when they've had an education at Fort Bend Public Schools, what, when they come out in the end, does what product are we producing? And and what qualities do we want? So they they gave you some examples. This was a document that we worked through when the committee was considering. We did, you might recall, we did a comprehensive needs assessment. We had, we collected data. We looked at that and then as a committee, we sort of synthesized that data. And so we came up with our own thoughts about what our graduates, so when you turn to the third page, this is basically our graduate profile. And so when we think about uh, what Longhorn graduates, it says ready for the world and I, Mandy Wright is the creator of, I I did not, none of this graphic, but let me be real clear. I'll give Mandy Wright full credit for the actual creation of what you're looking at. The material, the content came from the Community Engagement Task Force. But basically, these were the five points that came out of the collection of that data, the synthesizing of that data, and then the work of that committee. That we wanted our graduates, we thought our graduates should be problem solvers, resilient, adaptable. We should be responsible self-managers, enthusiastic and community, communicators. Imagine the the superintendent's delight when one of the things was enthusiasm. Anyway. So you can see the descriptors there and then the final page is just a kind of a graphic. I thought you did a great job of sort of, again, putting together sort of a snapshot. Of what in the simple terms, what it is we think our graduates should have and these are the qualities we want of them. And as we move forward with the accreditation process and our planning um, in the future, these are things we'd be thinking about when we're looking at curriculum across the school district. Uh, top to bottom, you know, uh, bottom to top, if you will, and um, how we uh, work with our students in extracurricular programs. And so that, this is the product that we, that our community told us and and through the the surveys. And again, looking at the data that we felt we wanted from our graduates. Other school districts across Montana have have had to do the same thing, but this is unique to us. Um, I imagine in a couple of years' time, we would relook at the data, is, are these still the qualities we want in our graduates or we would. Based again on the survey instruments in the future, look to see if they wanted to adjust that thinking. But I was, I was anxious to share that with you. The um. Electronic version will be included in my board report um, tomorrow. When I send that out. Any questions about that or the process we went through? Okay, um. I'm gonna hand this around, but again, you'll see electronic copy of this. I had the good fortune of attending a couple Lions Club meetings lately and I attended a meeting where our officers, Leo's Club officers went to a Lions Club meeting. And our Lion, our Leo's Club was what was highlighted in one of their Leo's Lions Club documents. And so this is a copy of it, but again, it'll be embedded in the uh. I'll start with you, then we'll come back. Yeah, that's right. I thought I'd give you a chance. I I was kind of, I thought it was very cool that they were highlighted in the Lions Club document. It's a district level, kind of a document across the state of Montana, I believe. And so it was kind of neat to see our kids being highlighted in that way. Um. Other thing, what I've been up to, um. You might recall, I may have mentioned it at a board meeting before, when last school year, the Office of Public Instruction did a workshop with our juniors and seniors. And it was a workshop called Figure It Out. You might also recall, you might recognize that title. Our staff then, this year in December. Went through a similar training by the same people, figure it out. And um, one of the things that came out of both the students. Workshop ideas to make the school better and the staff workshop. and the staff workshop was ways we could recognize our students for non-athletic things. They felt like we do a really good job of highlighting, we have send offs and we have, we have, we had a recognition on Monday morning for our girls wrestling team and highlighting the fact that they brought, there were some accomplishments in our state wrestling tournament. So I've been pondering and pondering and struggling with what to do about the honor roll. Because when we look at the way our honor roll policy is written, it's just, if you have 3.25 or higher, you're on the honor roll. But I struggle with that because when you look at, I, I've, I've had the good fortune now of signing the report cards and going through all the stack of report cards, you notice they're great point averages. We have kids, because of, of online classes, because of dual enrollment classes, that have a GPA of higher than four point. So you have kids that have a 4.25 GPA who by our current policy would be on the honor roll, just like a kid that has 3.25. Yes, they bolstered receive recognition, bless you. But in my mind, we should be thinking about them in what I would call sort of a layered approach. So what I've proposed and what I've attached, did I make enough copies? Yes, I think I did. I, I met with the staff last week and I gave them a look at a proposal and to consider. And if you look at what I'm handing out, this is also intended in my board report, but I give you two copies.
Nope.
But so what, what I'm proposing is on the bottom of this page. And what we'd be thinking about is a layered sort of approach. This is similar to an approach I've used in other schools where a basic honor, a student earning honor roll would be recognized for achieving a 3.25 to 3.74. The high honor roll would be any student maintaining a 3.75 to 3.99. The principal's academic honor award would be as 4.0 or higher. And the, the sheer number of kids on the honor roll is, is striking. So I, again, I felt the need to make, make it sort of to layer that. So had a good conversation with the staff. They, they were enthusiastic, supported this. The Student Council and the National Honor Society, students are going to get together and kind of give me some feedback about that point and then we'll move on. Our goal, our target would be to recognize students based on this criteria following the end of third quarter. I know we're into the school year already, but I wanted to do it well. I've been pondering and thinking about this and kicking it around. And so we've not had recognition for the honor roll first or second quarter. But again, if we're gonna do it, I wanted to make sure we did it correctly. So we'd have an assembly. We've talked about, do we hand out certificates? Do I mail those certificates? Some of those details are yet to be worked out. But the other thing we want to add is the final paragraph there is an award I want to call the Be The Bridge Award. And so we're gonna nominate, the staff will nominate two middle school students and four high school students. And these are kids, if you look at the foyer, the, the theme for this year is Be The Bridge. And we, we think about with what that means by students who are kind and pathetic, they're, they're service minded, they're honest, they're responsible, courageous, outgoing, and demonstrate teamwork. And these are characteristics we want of all of our students and when we think of Be The Bridge. So the staff, again, we modified sort of what I was thinking, but they would, every quarter, they would nominate two students, middle school, two poor students, high school, and they too would be recognized at an assembly. And like I mentioned with the National Honor Society and Student Council, they're gonna get together and give me some feedback. So that's been kind of a fun thing. You know, my day isn't always filled with fun things. It's always interesting, but this was a fun thing we've been kind of working on and we feel what's nice about it is it, it was born out of it from student voice. These, these were students giving us some, thinking about, we'd like to be, we feel like there should be some other forms of recognition. So that, that makes it kind of exciting to think about that it came really was, came from them. So stay tuned for more information about that, but that's a taste of what we're kind of pondering at the moment. So that would change our policy, our honor roll policy moving forward, which we would then adjust in the, in the handbooks for next school year.
I like it.
Yeah. Thank you. That's, I'm glad you did. The last thing I wanted to mention is it's National FFA Week. We've had, I got down and had pancakes and sausage this morning. I did however, forget that it was Blue and Gold Day. Because I told them I already had my outfit laid out for the day. Anyway, so I missed, I missed that point, but I did, I did want to point out that Brooke's doing a great job with the egg classes and with the FFA. And there's an enthusiastic group of people, kids that were down there cooking pancakes and they did a great job this morning. They had a duck game, hidden ducks all over the building yesterday. That was really fun. And tomorrow they're doing rock, paper, scissors to celebrate. And we, we had these three days because we didn't know what's gonna happen with the tournaments, how many kids were gonna be here on Thursday. But they've been very, like I said, enthusiastic and doing a great job. Just want to give a little kudos to the FFA and the work they do. Some of the highlights with dates upcoming, Russ pointed out the prom on the eighth. And remember this Friday, we don't have school, as we do not have school next Friday as well because of the two tournaments. So that is my report for tonight.
We had early graduation on there, but I
I think that was a misprint from last year. Yeah, so that's, no.
Okay, carried over.
Yeah.
I don't know that we approved the emergency handbook. And we do have second reading for updating policies on the agenda, so.
I, I know we had a first reading because I presented my notes some last month.
I think we need to have a final vote, so we can do that.
Okay, so, yeah, so that, the handbook itself is embedded again in my report tomorrow. But I didn't, I didn't think to make copies again for tonight.
Everyone was provided a copy already.
Yeah. And it was electronically attached to my, for last month too, so.
So we will have a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Committee reports here shortly.
I forgot to check that when we looked at the agenda. Sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah. No worries. I do too. Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Callie. How's that? Um, I thank you all for all of the support while I was gone at radiation. I am determined now. I do not need to live in buildings. Five weeks was long enough. Um, if you guys want to go and look at the purple sheet in your board packet, you can see we're pretty much on track with, it's, it's the end of the second quarter. So we're kind of mid of the third quarter. So we're more than halfway through our school year. And we're sitting right at 50%. So I think we're doing okay. I think we're gonna eke the year out. I think it will be tight. Um, I think with all the new legislation, things are going to get very interesting in our future. Um, they're completely changing how schools are funded. So it's kind of Wild West out there right now. And you know, there's been kind of a pause on some of our federal funding. And we do receive a large amount of federal funding. And if that does come through down the pipe, we could see some interesting things happen. So let's hope that doesn't happen. Um, I don't know the exact percent, but it's a large chunk of our like special ed and Title I programs. Would all go away? That's all federally funded? Um, Carl Perkins, so lots of our low tech stuff, fax, art, um, some of the, you know, the fun things, you know, our music program, we use federal funding to pay for all of that. So lots of those things.
Okay.
But the, my main concern is our Title I program. It's funded largely out of that. And those little kiddos through the cracks. Um, hopefully that resolves itself. Um, so I think we're doing good there. Next board meeting, I will have my quarterly board reports back to you now that I feel like I'm fully back. I didn't do it for you first quarter. But I have the second quarter. I nearly haven't done today to get to you, but I wanted Pat to have time to review before I presented it to you in case I made a mistake. Um, so then the next thing I have is to canvas the votes from the levy. So I have the, we'll just have trustee sign. Um, so that it makes it official. On the elementary building reserve and the high school building reserve, um, for and against in District One. So it has the total number of votes and it's what Bethany, it's the same thing Bethany reported in the paper. We just have to officially have you guys sign it. And then for the knees, Ben Lake and Carter. I can pass those around.
Do we need to sign only the ones that were in the district? So like, like the knees, does that have to be?
Well, the knees is, is the high school district, so it'll actually be everybody. Um, the only one that is just elementary, or elementary is District One. So I just have to have District One people sign on this one. So I need to pass them around or hold them until the end of the meeting?
Uh, let's get them started, I guess.
Okay.
Can work on them. My capacity. I don't know. Thank you.
Um, and then the only other thing I have for tonight is we need to call for our election for our trustee's election. Which will be May. We didn't, Connie and I looked. May 6th will be the official election date. We have three positions open on our board. Um, the knees position, which currently Dusty holds that position. And then Joel's position and Kyle's position are up for reelection. And you people have till March 27th file for those. So I just need a motion to call for trustee's election.
So moved. Six, you know, District One signs all of them.
District One signs all of them. Nope, you sign all of those except for the one that went this way. The going line.
There you go.
No, I don't.
Um, we, okay, I need a second on that motion. I can second it.
Do, I need this abstained from the vote saying as I'm involved in the election?
No, no. No, we just have to call for the election.
Yeah, sure.
Yep.
Any comments on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Great. Anything else, Callie?
That is it. I'm glad to be back.
Yes, we're glad you're back. Okay, um, committee report. So accreditation committee Darren, I need your report on the accreditation committee meeting.
We spent a lot of the time, well, it was a fairly short meeting, but we basically just ordered into the round bus or recommend that we order into the round bus. We felt like it was important to keep them, you know, rotating them and and otherwise you get too many miles on them and they, they become a maintenance thing. So we recommend that we get a round bus.
Did we get finance, financials or anything on that that we need to?
Yeah, we did. We have, help me out here. We have two buses coming.
Yeah, we have one bus that we ordered last year and it'll come this spring. And so that money has already been encumbered. For that bus. And then this bus will actually approve it and order it now. So we won't actually get this bus until fiscal year 26. So we need to approve it now so that we can order it. And we'll encumber the fund in the next fiscal year. So you have to order your buses almost 18 months ahead. So it gets really wampy when you're fiscally thinking about it. I mean, that we're all now, we'll order it now, but we won't get it for like a year and a half almost.
And none of the financial stuff is better off?
No, this also has our bus depreciation. So when you buy new buses, you depreciate them out and then you get the funding to buy another bus. So as long as we don't ever increase our fleet size and we're just replacing buses, you can use the bus depreciation to replace your buses. The only other time you would need general fund money or transportation money is when you're buying a new bus or increasing your fleet. So like, you know, Paul and I, our dream, both of us have this dream of having extra money and being able to buy a suburban, right? Or a 15 passenger van. Um, but we can't do that with bus depreciation money because it isn't already in our fleet. So, um, just replacing this, and this is something Jeanette started a long time ago, using that bus depreciation fund effectively. As that when a bus is completely depreciated out and they're kind of getting a lot of miles on it, that we roll it over into a new one. So we're continually taking advantage of that depreciation to get a new bus.
What if like an old, beat down passenger van was added to the fleet for like, it was donated?
Nope.
And that could be
No.
And it just
And then it was like this, I know, right? I know. Well, we thought, we both trust us. We'd like, we'd like
The whole one out of Merlin's yard.
Right? And then like, oh, but we're gonna roll it into a new one. Like, yeah, I know. So you can never depreciate any of those items.
Gotcha.
So the E-type buses, none of those, you get the depreciation for.
E-type, when she's talking about E-type, it's not electric, it's SUV or a van. That's what E-type goes to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not, it's like a passenger vehicle. Any type of passenger vehicle, we can't depreciate. So like our school car, driver's ed van, the kitchen van, we all have to pay for all three of those items out of our general fund. And the day is coming where that kitchen van and the driver's ed van are gonna need replaced.
Kitchen van more so than.
Yeah. So I mean, it's something we're gonna have to think long and hard about. Unfortunately, but the buses are pretty, we yeah, no brainer situation.
Oh, I second the motion.
Did we have a first? You made your motion. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Losing track here.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? You what?
I like this round class.
All right.
Oh, round class.
Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
And then the only other thing we have, we did a little strategizing on when a bus should run and, and when it shouldn't. And I think we got some, some good ideas on you know, communication and where there's.
Good discussion?
Yeah. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Buildings and grounds, we've scheduled our meeting, so you can skip over that. And then for policy, we just need to have a motion to approve our second reading on policies.
There's two of them. The early graduation policy and the emergency handbook.
Right.
So.
Let's look at that. Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Only question I had about scheduling committee meetings was we had started, we had a long policy committee meeting, you might recall before the last board meeting. And we the policy related to student drug and alcohol use was never, was resolved. We had a long conversation about it, but that one was, it was left sort of, we don't, there's no, nothing urgent about that, but just a reminder that we need to be thinking about that when we might want to visit that again. Well, it's so fresh in our memories.
It was resolved, resolved in the sense that we didn't have any consensus on changing it.
Correct, exactly, exactly. So if there's any interest in doing anything more with it other than that, yes, exactly.
Um, we, should we buzz through the personnel stuff before we go to close session? Is there a reason it's after?
I thought we, we actually thought we reversed it, but that's okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Can we do that? I don't see why not. Oh, okay. Does anyone in this room oppose us switching the order of those? Okay. Um, but
Yes, Bethany can go home.
Yeah. No reason to keep people around for a closed session if you don't have anything to stay around for. Okay. Um, unless you so choose, you can sit outside the room and make sure we all walk out of here, okay? All right, so resignations.
I've received two resignations, one on the 4th of February from Aiden Manning. And basically he, he and his family, he took a job in Virginia, Virginia. And so moved back where her family is from. Been a short notice, but it is what it is. And so he officially, his last official day was last Friday, the 4th, uh, 7th, a week ago, la, uh, 7th of February. And I can pass that around. The other one I received today is from Amy Hanson, who will be, as, will be resigning and her official last day will be June 13th. We kind of knew that was coming, we just didn't know when. But she's made it official with that letter to me today.
She's filled a lot of important roles for us too, so that's
Yeah. So
Well, we'll miss her.
Callie and I talked about that a little bit today and, and we'll begin advertising, but I think we'll try to be wise in our decision making about rehiring for that position and not necessarily quick. That's what we sort of discussed, so.
Well, we appreciate Amy giving us plenty of notice so that we can take our time.
Yeah, she had to roll rock in that position.
Yeah, they're not easy to fill. And Longhorn's in theater and speech and drama coaching and all of those things, yeah.
You, you may see for, you may see her name request in the next couple of months to be on our sub list, depending on the status of her family. And I also talked to her about whether she helps in the transition to a new person, which she's more than happy to do, which could include back to school scheduling in August even. So I want to stay tuned about that. Okay? Yeah, the hirings I have, Lynn Dana and Nicole Walker both were, worked for us, but would also, would both like to sub for us as well. So I would kindly ask for So I would kindly ask for your blessing and I recommend that we hire Lynn Dana as a sub and an aide, uh, uh, position and also Nicole Walker. So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. All right. Um, next item on the agenda is our superintendent evaluation. Um, this is a situation where the employee's right to practice outweighs the public's right to know. And so, um, Pat, would you like to have a closed session for this?
Yes, please.
So we are gonna ask
I guess, well, that's, do we have any future items that we need to go over before?
Anyone else, anyone here have any future items? You need to make sure we know. We'll actually come out of this, um, we have to officially close the meeting in public, so we will do that, yeah.
Okay, do we need a motion to accept this? Or like, or anything?
No.
I'll just say publicly, we completed evaluation. Oh, you need to sign it too? Um, so then the only thing left, future items. We'll have some committee reports. Right, but some of them to move into adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Complete anyone?
Thank you. Yes. Hey, Jen?
Yeah.